Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board work session. This afternoon, Tuesday, December 20, December 10, 2024. Thank goodness we're not in 20 yet. And we're here for the purpose of discussing the potential for guardians in our schools. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because there is not a regularly scheduled meeting and because the school board will be taking no action and there will be no public comment period before this meeting. I do, I want to stress that again, the school board will be taking no official action today. If we were, we would definitely be taking public input. Again, thank you all for joining us this morning. Also, as a reminder to the board and to the public, board members will not be engaging in outside digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus our full attention on the issue before us. And to my fellow board members, staff, and members of the public, and myself, remember when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and that you're speaking directly into it so that our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Now, we will begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to begin in just a minute. I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Vasquez, but I do want to take this opportunity, this is our first work session where we have our two new board members. So I want to take this opportunity to welcome Board Member Vanos, welcome. She's been a regular in our meetings in terms of being in the audience, I think, for almost every meeting that I can remember for many years now. So welcome, and we are excited to have your participation in this role. And another new member of our board, but not new to Orange County Public Schools, is Member Douglas. And Member Douglas has spent years teaching in Orange County Public Schools, and she joins us on the board with her wealth of experience, which is invaluable to the decisions that we make here. With that, I will turn the floor over to Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, you will hear from our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Roberto Pacheco, and Chief Holmes on the Guardian program. As you know, we have benefited greatly from having SROs in our schools. I am so thankful for the partnership that we have had for so many years in ensuring that our schools are safe places for our students to learn and for our employees to work. We engaged in negotiations starting in February of this year, hoping to secure a three-year contract with the various agencies that support our schools. We were able to reach a three-year agreement with agencies, with all but five of the agencies impacting 30 schools. You will hear today information about the Guardian program. You will hear about the costs associated with the program and the contract that we currently have in place. And we, you will also hear that we need to make a decision about our next steps by the end of January, as it will take us approximately six months to stand up the Guardian program.
You will also have an opportunity to ask questions of both Mr. Pacheco and Chief Holmes after the presentation, and I am now going to turn it over to Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good afternoon, Chair, Superintendent, Board Members. Ensuring our staff and student safety and security remains our utmost priority. Before the commencement of the school year, as stated by the Superintendent, we negotiated with nine local law enforcement agencies to secure safe school officers for all our traditional schools. This negotiation process resulted in a three-year agreement with four agencies and a one-year agreement with the remaining five. These agreements detail the roles and responsibilities of each party, including the reimbursement rates for services rendered by law enforcement agencies and their officers. While we will continue to negotiate, however, it is imperative that we consider alternative options to ensure readiness for any potential outcome. Today, we will discuss some strategies to maintain a safe and secure environment in our schools independent of the results of the ongoing negotiations with the five remaining law enforcement agencies. These five remaining law enforcement agencies cover 30 of our 213 schools. Our goal today is to provide a comprehensive overview regarding these alternatives, particularly the application of the Guardian program, and to discuss how we can best serve our school district. With that goal in mind, our agenda for today will be the following. We will remind you about the safe school officers mandate, tell you a little bit of background about that. We will present information on the Guardian program, including background information on the creation of the program, the application of the program, training, screening, and recertification requirements for the program and those participating on it, programming implementation considerations. We will compare the different types of school, of safe school officers, and we will provide you details on funding information, reimbursement rates, historical data, and comparative analysis. And lastly, as stated by the Superintendent, we will have some time to answer any questions that you might have. Today, beside me is the Chief of our District Police and also our School Safety Specialist, Brian Holmes, but he will continue with the presentation at this time.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board, Superintendent. Section 100, decimal 12 Florida statutes states that each district school board and superintendent shall partner with law enforcement or security agencies to assign one or more safe school officers at each school facility within the district, including charter schools. These could be done by using a combination of: school resource officers, these are sworn certified law enforcement officers employed by a local law enforcement agency; school safety officers, that's what the district police currently is. These are law enforcement officers certifies as law enforcement agency or the district school board. A school safety officer has the power to arrest persons. Under the same conditions as a deputy sheriff are authorized to make arrests on board property. School guardians: a school district, and there's three different types of guardians, so let me be clear, a school district or charter school employee or personnel, including teachers, who volunteers to serve as a school guardian in addition to his or her official duties; an employee of a school district or a charter school who is hired for the specific purpose of serving as a school guardian; and then there's the school security guard. A school district or charter school governing board may contract with a private security agency to employ an individual who holds a Class D and Class G license, provided the security guard has also completed the Guardian training program, and I'll go into specifics about that in a bit. So I'm going to give you a little background on how the Guardian program got started in the state of Florida. On February 14, 2018, a gunman took 17 lives and injured 17 others at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. As a result, the legislature passed a bill creating the Chris Hickson, Coach Aaron Feis, and Coach Scott Beigel Guardian Program in honor of those who gave their lives during the tragedy. Why the Guardian program was created? Well, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission found that having guardians in schools is an option to ensure highly-trained personnel are in place to respond immediately in the event of a school shooting. Also, the cost of law enforcement services continues to escalate, something we're experiencing here, and the funding received by the districts from the state is not sufficient to pay for all the school safety and security expenditures. Next slide. So I'm going to go over this real quick, just so you're clear about what a Guardian program and how it applies. Again, a school district employee who volunteers to serve as a school guardian in addition to his or her official job duties; a school district employee who is hired for the specific purpose of serving as a school guardian; and then the third option, security guardians contracted by the school district through a security agency. So what type of training do they have to have? Each guardian candidate must complete a 144-hour training program. This consists of 12 hours of a certified nationally-recognized diversity training and 132 total hours of comprehensive firearm safety and proficiency training conducted by a Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission certified instructor. That's a law enforcement firearms instructor. Though these are minimum requirements, some sheriff's offices also may choose to require additional hours. Training exceeds the requirement actually for a police academy trainee for the 144 hours total when it comes to, you combine the diversity and the firearms and, and the other training. A sheriff's office shall provide training once the district school board and sheriff's office approve implementing the Guardian training. The sheriff shall issue a school guardian certificate to individuals who meet the statutory requirements. The sheriff shall maintain documentation of weapon and equipment inspections, as well as the training certification, inspection, and qualification records of each school guardian appointed by the sheriff. What are some of the other requirements? Well, they have to pass a psych, psychological evaluation administered by a licensed psychologist designated by the Department of Law Enforcement, and submit the evaluation results to the sheriff's office. They must submit to and pass an initial drug test and subsequent random drug tests in accordance with statutory requirements and that of the sheriff's office. And lastly, successfully complete an ongoing training, weapons inspection, and firearms qualification on at least an annual basis. And again, back to that recertification requirement, guardian must be recertified on an annual basis. Any of the expenses incurred by the sheriff's office to facilitate the recertification are eligible for reimbursement by the state of Florida Department of Education using Guardian program grant funds. So the sheriff gets paid back for these services that he's providing in the training. Recertification requirements are determined by the sheriff's office, responsible for initial certification in conjunction with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Next slide. Again, funds are provided to the sheriff's office for screening-related and training-related costs, as well as a one-time stipend of $500 to district and charter school employees, personnel, and teachers who volunteer to serve as guardians. Any expenses incurred by the sheriff's office related to screening, training, or stipends, again, are eligible to be submitted to the Department of Education for reimbursement. So what are some of the things you ought to consider if you're considering a Guardian program? Next slide. Let's talk about threat management. All traditional and charter schools are required to have a school-based threat management team. The team requires a sworn law enforcement officer to be on the team. Guardians do not meet this requirement as a sworn law enforcement officer. The school-based threat management team must meet at least monthly, once monthly, and in the event there's a threat at the school, they have to meet to assess any one of the threats or concerning behaviors that happen to go to the team itself. Let's talk about shared risk and responsibilities, because any person certified as a school guardian has no authority to act at any law enforcement capacity except to the extent necessary to prevent or abate an active assailant incident on our campuses. They're not standing in the place of a cop, they can't make an arrest. The current SRO model shares the risk and responsibility between the disc, the district, and our local law enforcement agencies that provide these services. It's shared risk, shared responsibilities. The SRO model increases the force multiplier effect that we get by having a local law enforcement agency as serving in that capacity. In our school, the SROs can contact their detectives to share information. Their intel analysts will be involved in their investigations. They have additional personnel that can be called at a moment's notice on their radio, and here comes the cavalry in the event they need support or help. Next slide. Other things that we need to consider, or you need to consider as the board, are community concerns. Utilizing a Guardian model may diminish the perception of security across the entire district. Some schools don't have an SRO, they have a guardian instead. The diminished response capability to emergencies at schools, because typically the guardians are not carrying that agency's radio. They don't have that. That's something we might be able to mitigate, but those agencies would have to agree to that. And then, a perception of inequity of services, well, why do these schools have a guardian? Why do these schools have an SRO? Those are questions that we'd have to address. Talk a little bit more about the services that are brought by an SRO model. Well, presence. There's a cop there in a uniform that can act. They have marked patrol cars. They have both offensive and defensive weapons capabilities, rifles, helmets, shields, chem agents, tasers, expandable batons, handcuffs. All the officers in this county carry Narcan in the event we have an OD on our campus. Now, some of these things I can mitigate. That's something I may be able to mitigate with a, with a program using the guardians, but we'd have to work on that. Crisis intervention training, again, another item I could mitigate, but all the officers that serve as SROs in our schools already have crisis intervention training, and that's a special emphasis on students with special needs. That's what that training is mostly all about. Again, law enforcement communications, call right to the dispatch, here comes the cavalry, enhanced active assailant training, threat management, and the cops can Baker Act the student that's in need of Baker Act services and mental health support on any given day. Next slide. So let's take a look at what some other districts are doing. We utilize these. I'd like to start with Hillsborough. Hillsborough has what I like to refer to as a hybrid model. They have guardians in their elementary. They have SROs in all their middle schools, and then at their high schools, they have two, but one is an SRO and the other's a guardian. Polk County, guardians in their elementary, SROs in the middle schools, again, that hybrid model, SRO and guardians, and Sheriff Judd, you know, he can't have enough people armed, so he is actually adding administrators to his schools as well that have Guardian training. Bivard, they have the same model, guardians in elementary, middle schools, SROs, and then SRO and guardian in their high school. Osceola, SROs in their traditional schools, guardians only in their charters. Lake County SROs with guardians as a second layer, uniformed administrators or professional managerial personnel are concealed, carry. Seminole, SROs only. And then last but not least, dedicated guardians at Volusia in nearly every school. Schools without a guardian have an SRO. Next slide. So we did some estimated costs for you. Mind you, these are estimates. We'll start with the SRO program. This year, we're paying $72,000. We factored in some things that we pay additional for, and not all of it, but most of it, pre-planning, spring break camps, summer camps, and summer school. We pay $55 an hour for additional services for any of the SROs and those particular capacities. You got a total salary of $87,840, and that's the grand total for the SRO. Security guards, all right. We got a company to give us a bill rate, and we factored in 180-day school year additional for the other things I just mentioned, and then, of course, a total salary of $74,304. And then, if we were to hire guardians here that work for district police and put them in the schools, the actual salary itself would start lower, and then some of the additional costs would be a bit lower. But when you add the equipment, I'd have to provide enough firearm, belts, uniforms, a vest, and things of that nature, a radio, a school radio, and a radio most likely to be able to talk directly to district police. We get up to $74,000, which is very comparative when it comes to the security guard model. So here are just some summary of considerations. If we had a Guardian model, it would require the district police to provide oversight for the Guardian program, a lot closer. Threat management teams, we would have to cover that and step in there. And then, incident response and reporting, the schools that have guardians, most likely, you know, if there was an emergency in the school, they would be calling the local agency, but if there was a need to take a police report, possibly some sort of disruption, there's a chance that we would have to do that and respond to the school. Other considerations: risk to the consistency and responsiveness to our security protocols. Onboarding process, hey, it takes time and resources to do that, and we would have to hire probably, if it was us, 34 personnel. If it was a security guard, agency that was doing that, they do a lot of that. Onboarding people, and they would have those responsibilities, it wouldn't be us. General liability, you know, where would those be shifted to? And then again, that whole idea of public perception of the inconsistency of services. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Pacheco to talk about safe schools funding.
Thank you, Brian. The following slides outlines the funds allocated by the state to enhance the safety and security of our students and staff. While these funds are essential, they unfortunately fall short of covering all the necessary expenses associated with our safety and security initiatives. As a result, the district will need to seek additional funding sources to implement comprehensive security measures. The slides detail the amount designated for charter schools, where we have to share the funds that we get, our district police, safe coordinators, and all related costs associated with the school resource officer program. As shown, the estimated additional funding required for fiscal year '25 this year will exceed $16.8 million. This slide shows the steady increase in SRO reimbursement rates over the past 10 years. These increases have been crucial in ensuring that our schools have adequate safety officer coverage. Notably, the rate for the current school year reflects a 20% Notably, the rate for the current school year reflects a 20% increase from the previous rate. Additionally, the rates negotiated for the next two years with the four out of the nine law enforcement agencies will result in a final increase of 25% from last school year. This demonstrates our district's commitment and collaborative efforts regarding the SRO program. These final slides compares the average teacher salary and the SRO reimbursement rate over the past 10 years. This illustrates that the SRO reimbursement rate has exceeded the increase in teacher salaries. From fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2025, the increase on the average teacher salary has grown by 14%, while the cost to the district for SROs has grown by 44%. So this completes the information that we have for you this afternoon. Now I hand it over to the superintendent for comments to address any questions you might have.
Thank you both for the informative presentation. One last note before we take questions from the board that I don't believe was mentioned in the presentation. While the increases that, while we were not able to reach a three-year agreement with the five agencies because of the requested increases, the contract for the other agencies stipulate that if we pay any agency more money than has been agreed to in their contract, that they are entitled to that amount. Hence why, for the district, it is almost a $2 million additional ask. It's not just for these 30 schools. It would impact all 213 of our schools. And Madam Chair, we will now take questions from the board.
All right. Thank you. One question I haven't, I read over the presentation over the weekend, and we met on it. What is the amount that they're actually asking for per officer?
Chair, at this point, we have had preliminary discussions with mainly one agency. We'd yet to confirm how much they will be asking for over all those five, but the latest number that we have, again, unconfirmed by all the other agencies, is, let me make sure...
I just haven't found that information, and so when we're saying how much more it's going to cost, it has to be based on something.
I got it right here. Is $75,500 for fiscal year '26 and $79,000 for fiscal year '27. And that's, if you use that and interpolate, that's where the number comes from, from the superintendent. So that will be, for all the agencies, close to 3/4 of a million dollar for next year, and then about $1.2 million for the following year, for the third year. That brings us close to the $2 million mark. Again, that number has not been finalized. I know that we have one agency that has said that that could be a number that might make them comfortable, but all the other four agencies will have confirmation that that will be a sufficient number for them.
Okay. I'm going to go through, most of the board members do have questions or comments. When we circle back around, if you would be able to put up on the screen what we are currently, what we would be paying based on our current contract for the next year and the following year? Now, I mean, just have that ready so we can compare that to the 75 and the 79, okay? Does that make sense?
I do not have a slide reflecting that, Chair. Maybe I can, that's what I'm reading it, but I can definitely make that available to all board members.
You have that information. Just pull it up, and we come back around to me if you can share that with us, because that was the other thing that I was missing in this, okay?
Okay.
So what we would be paying for the contracts that we currently have locked in versus what you think they might be asking for, the 75.5 and the 79?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let me start with Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a lot to unpack here. Is anybody else a little sick at their stomach that we have to have this conversation? Yeah, I thought so. First off, I do have a couple of comments. I want to thank Orlando PD, the Orange County Sheriff, Eatonville, and Maitland for agreeing to sign this three-year contract. We so appreciate them and their efforts to provide the safest option for our schools, which is a school resource officer. And their budgets are tight, just like our budgets are tight, just like the other five municipalities' budgets are tight, and yet they found the dollars because they prioritize the safety of our schools and the safety of our students. So I want to be very clear on that. This is, we're either going to prioritize their safety or we're not. My personal opinion as a school board member, and I think every law enforcement agency in Orange County would agree that the safest option, in fact, they've said it publicly, the safest option for our schools is one that has a school resource officer. So to speak to the inequity, how unfair is it that my district, District 1 is unincorporated, I will have SROs at every single one of my schools, but I butt up against two-member Vannas District, which is Winter Park, and they may be forced to have guardians? So my children, my students in my district will have the opportunity for that safest option, and yet Winter Park, Windermere, Winter Garden, Acoe, and Apopka will not. So just that inequity bothers me, and it concerns me greatly. But I do have a couple of questions. I know when you first, on one of the first slides, we were talking about security guards, the guardian program, school safety specialists, and then, of course, school resource officers. So just for the public's consumption, really, there's really only two options. We've got school resource officers, which are sworn law enforcement. Our district police, which are our school safety specialists, which, again, are sworn law enforcement officers with arrest authority and can intervene on any situation that happens on our campus, has been trained to de-escalate students, students with disabilities, and students that have mental challenges. They have been trained in that. The only people that we allow to Baker Act kids, and I'm not a fan of Baker Acts, I don't like them, but the only people that can on our campuses are law enforcement officers. That's it. That's the only people that we will allow to actually Baker Act on our campuses. So when we talk about it, our two options are SROs or guardians, because the security guards have to be guardian-trained. So there's just another fancy term for guardians that we just outsource versus doing in-house, correct?
Well, the security guards, and if we had in-house guardians, administrators, whatever, they all have to go through the 144-hour training, all of them.
Right. And I don't think even for today's purpose, we're even talking about administrators or teachers, because I don't think there's any appetite on this board whatsoever for that. But when we do talk about the inequities, we will have students that are in those five municipalities that will not want to go to those schools because they don't believe that the guardian is the safest option. We'll also have staff that will want to transfer because they don't believe that guardians are the safest option for our schools. So the ongoing training, that's for the Sheriff's Office to look like. So you can't even tell me here today, past that 144 hours, what that ongoing training will look like. Is that correct?
Well, that's up to the sheriff. The sheriff, any additional hours, the sheriff would make a decision to do that. The annual training is always going to be a firearms recertification, and any additional new information they have about the guardians and what they would need to know would be part of that for sure.
So you talked briefly about the difference in an SRO and a guardian, and you highlighted some of the points that we've been discussing, which is what an SRO has at their disposal versus a guardian. Because a guardian's only function, only function on our campus is to stop an intruder. And if someone were to intrude, the only way they can stop that intruder is to shoot and kill them because they can't arrest them. They can't, like, they can't even, like, right? They've got to shoot them. That's all they can do, is that correct?
Prevent and abate.
So if you could just go over a little bit more of what the equipment that an SRO would have versus what a guardian would have, because I know, we talked about a radio, that that would be up to each agency if they would afford us or the guardians, allow them to have a radio. I know that they don't, there's different weapons. You just spoke about Narcan. Can you just go to a little bit more detail about that, please?
Yeah, you know, what's law enforcement in this county?
I want to be real careful about what we disclose about capabilities of our law enforcement officers with respect to what they have and what tools are at their disposal. I don't want to give that advantage to anybody out there who could be coming onto our campus to know what we have. The stuff that he's discussed, but I just want to be real careful about what we disclose publicly.
I appreciate that. I do want to, just, if I could just, I think carrying Narcan is fine because that is not a danger issue, so...
So I'll ask this. I'll ask it, I'll, thank you, John. I'll ask a genetic, not a genetic, a generic. A generic question. School resource officers have more equipment or more firepower at their disposal than we would allow a guardian to have. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And the new law, there's a law that basically says that every district has to have guardians, correct?
Not necessarily guardians. You have to have an SSO, a safe school officer, and all of those that I mentioned before fall underneath that category. So yes, if you don't have the SRO, you don't have a school safety officer, which, I'm a school safety officer, then you would have to provide a guardian and one of the options that I discussed earlier.
Sorry, I just want to interrupt for a minute. Chief Holmes, I know these mics are very frustrating. Put that right in front of you, because I do want to make sure we're picking up. We can hear you in this room, but I'm not sure that the mic's picking up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was referring to, I thought there was a law that passed that it was still up to the school board on what they wanted in our schools, but every district needed to have a guardian, and we met that because we have charters that have guardians. Did I misinterpret that?
That's correct. We have met that because we do have guardians in our charter schools.
So I'm only pointing that out because I've read a lot of articles and a lot of comments where they're like, the legislature needs to fund the SROs, the legislature needs to fund the SROs, and while I agree with that, they're really encouraging more guardians, and they've actually mandated that every district have at least one guardian. So I'm not certain that we will get the money that we need from Tallahassee, because I think Tallahassee's been perfectly clear that they feel that guardians serve the purpose that they need to serve. And prioritize those as they do SROs on the same, like, level playing field.
All right, let me acknowledge the superintendent for response.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I am not mistaken, if you're choosing to use your own employees as guardians, there's actually grant money to pay the stipend and to offset the cost of the training. And so the state does believe that guardians is a viable option, and there are several districts that employ guardians and agree with that. We have been fortunate to have our SROs in all of our schools, which gives more of a sense of security because of the ability to act in the way that they do the training that they have received, and for the reasons that Chief Holmes has mentioned, there's so many other things that they are able to do for us.
Thank you, Superintendent. So we're, districts are actually incentivized to use a guardian program. Okay, that's all I have for now. I want to hear from my fellow school board members regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Felder, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Officer Holmes and, Chief Holmes and Roberto for the detailed report regarding our conversation about guardians. As a former teacher in this district nearly 40 years or more, I appreciate it knowing an SRO was on the campus. I appreciate this type of camaraderie that they developed with students, and so when students left the campus or were out in the community, they recognized the SRO, and a lot of crimes were prevented, and there was discussion. With regards to guardians, even though they're hybrids at work, I don't know who the guardian may be. It could be a parent, or it could be anybody that may not be in the same community or know the child or know the community. And Board Member Gallo asked again, and it struck me again, when she asked the question, the only equipment they would have would be to just shoot. SROs have the ability to arrest, to talk, to scale down. We're living in a season and in a climate where people have no fear about walking on our campuses with AR-15s and harming our children. An SRO has not gone to a 14-week training, she's gone to an academy, and has been trained and received a diploma, certificate, to express that wide merit of training that they would have had to know how to handle all the weapons that they have. And when Officer, Chief Holmes mentioned that, I think this is on page, I can't remember the page, but said guardians don't need, they don't meet the sworn law enforcement officers that our officers would have. That concerns me. Also, the fact that my schools have SROs either with OPD or with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, but my other fellow board members, some of them, they won't have, if this, if we can't come to an agreement, they won't have access to SROs. That's unfair. That is not right. And as a parent or legal guardian, that would draw some real concerns for me. And thirdly, when I look at the salary of teachers, seven and a half hours out a day, and the salary that SROs are requiring, the teachers, 14%, and SROs has grown by 20%, that concerns me. I'm not going to belabor this any longer because I'm sure we'll come back around with some other stuff, but I need you to know, I want it on record, school board, Vicky Felder, I have a concern that there's a difference in our schools where one, some schools would have trained, trained police officers above a 14-week training, but trained, as opposed to some of the schools in our district, not having that access. That draws great concern for me, and I'm not in favor at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Byrd, you're recognized, vice chair.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, yeah, there's so much here to unpack, as Member Gallo said. First, I think as Chief Holmes shared and my fellow board members have shared, we all, I believe, see the numerous advantages to having our SROs in our schools. I have some of the, what I believe to be the best SROs in our district, in my schools, that go so far and above and beyond what they even have to do, even traveling with our football team to go to away games just to make sure that students and football players are safe. The advantages are numerous and cannot be overstated. One of the biggest advantages, too, that we haven't even talked about, that goes even beyond, of course, the obvious of keeping our kids safe, is the relationships that these SROs build with our students. And when our students see these police officers in this light of, that they care about them and that they mentor them, they have conversations with them every day, they are part of their school community... they, they are part of their school community, it changes their perception of what they may think of law enforcement, right? The negative stories that sometimes you hear about law enforcement. It's important for that relationship building for our law enforcement. And I've heard that from my chiefs in my area and from my police officers in my area, that they value those relationships and being in the schools and how important they feel that it is to be in the schools. That's why I'm so incredibly disappointed by where we're at today. With all of that being said, we have to have coverage in our schools. As a school district, we do not have a choice. We have to have someone in our schools bell to bell. That's the law. And we, I, I honestly believe in my heart that we made a very good faith effort in our negotiations, as is evidenced by our largest partner, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, accepting the three-year deal. They wouldn't have accepted if it wasn't a good deal. That was a, we increased by 20%. In the next three years, we will have increased by a 25% increase. That is, is, as you said, evidence of our commitment to keeping our SROs in our school. That's how important it is to us as, at the school district, despite not being funded properly by the state, which is not anything new for us here at the school district. The safe school funding is just one more allocation that we are underfunded in. And I understand, as Member Gallo said, the stresses about not being able to fully staff their police department because they, they needed to raise their rates so that they can hire police officers. Believe me, as a school board member, I understand that. I've got vacant classrooms with no teacher in it. I've got school buses that aren't picked up on time because I don't have enough bus drivers because we cannot offer a salary that is competitive. So I understand their concern and I understand why they need to raise their salaries. I also understand that the municipalities have a little more flexibility with their funding. They can raise their taxes, which I know some of them have recently done. But this safe school allocation that we get is the money that we're given, period, end of story. The fact that we are overspending that budget this year by 16.8, actually almost 16.9 million dollars, is, is evidence of our commitment to keep our kids safe, is also sad that we are not funded properly. The fact that our transportation budget, which I know I help on this a lot, is only funded at like 50%. I think it's even less than that, that Doreen who's in the back. But every one of our categorials, categoricals is underfunded. So the fact that we have some of our law, our law enforcement partners that don't recognize that, that we are, this is what we're given, we don't have flexibility, we are really stuck between a rock and a hard place because we have no other option than a guardian if we, if they do not settle this contract with us, is disappointing. And, and for me, the big question is, you know, the, these are our, these schoolchildren that attend these schools every day, the staff that work in those schools, the parents who drop those kids off at their school every day, our community members inside of these communities and these municipalities that are arguing about this contract. So I personally do not understand where this, this, this attitude of these, this is, these are your group of people to find the money to protect, as opposed to, this is not all of our, this is, these are not all of our community members to protect. So I'm extremely disappointed that we are where we're at. But with all of that being said, I appreciate you doing the research on this, the guardian program. I understand that it does not mean that we are arming teachers and administrators, that there are other options to hopefully make it as safe as it possibly can be. But those are just my initial thoughts. I have some questions, but I'm going to leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Byrd. Let me call on Member Ferrant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hold on, let me get used to this mic here over here. So I agree with Member Byrd. It is disappointing to see that, you know, we, we take great pride here at OCPS in making sure that safety of our students is top priority. I think every one of us, that's one of our biggest things, is making sure that our kids are safe. And it sort of is disappointing that the, I mean, what I feel is an incredible raise to the SROs couldn't have been received well by the five different municipalities. And so I hope to see in January, when things, you know, the talks and all that get back up, that they have a change of heart and see that it is important for them to be in our schools. However, I do have a few questions and, and I have talked with other school board members in different areas throughout Florida, just to ask them, do you have SROs? Do you have guardians? How is it? And I will say, I was put at, quite at ease, the majority of the ones that I spoke to said that they have guardians in their schools. And I do see some shaking heads. I know that is not what everybody wants. And I will be, I'm here to, as a voice for the community. So if the community wants SROs, I'm all for SROs. But I do want to just share what I heard. And so from the other school board members, they said that they have guardians in their schools. They feel the majority of those guardians, if not all, are former law enforcement and former military, which shows that I would never, ever want a teacher. I would never want a, a staff member. I wouldn't want just a regular Joe from the community to be a guardian. But if it is a former law enforcement, somebody who's retired, who has the training, that's something I would consider. If that is where we're at and we were literally stuck in between a rock and a hard place, I would be willing to look into it further. If we don't have the money and that's what we have to do, I do want people to understand that in those, those school board members all told me that they feel their schools are incredibly safe and they feel that it is, they don't feel that there's a difference. However, I do think when we look at the SROs, this is like, if, if I could have it perfect and have it my way, I would love an SRO and continue to have an SRO in every one of our schools. So I really hope that we can see a, a change of heart in our community with the, with these different municipalities who are kind of giving a pushback. So with that said, a couple of questions for you. With the guardians, I don't remember what page it was on, but it was about the 144 hours of training. When it talks about the different training, so 132 hours would be gun safety training. So they would just have to go through basically how to shoot the gun. And if they're already former military and former law enforcements, I'm assuming they would know what they're doing.
They would, and I'm pretty confident there'll be some de-escalation in there as well.
That, that was one of my other questions, is with the de-escalation, because I know some were saying that they would have to just shoot when they see somebody. I do not believe that that is what would happen. That's like a last resort for anyone. Go ahead.
Not necessarily. Prevent or abate. I mean, if somebody's a threat to, you know, our school, that's their responsibility.
Okay. That's good to know. Okay. The 12 hours of a diversity training, what, what would that look like?
You know, it's diversity training to make sure you understand the rules of the workplace and treat everybody with respect.
And so just understanding?
Human diversity training overall.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I'm not a law enforcement, so I don't understand what it would be.
Okay. It's essentially to make sure you're not stepping on racial, religious and, you know, preferences that people may have when you're working in the workplace. So you're not, you know, insulting people and causing a problem.
Okay. Okay. And then my other question, the, part of the SRO services, one of them was enhanced activity, or excuse me, enhanced active assailant training. Is that not something that we would have the guardians go through?
They would go to active assailant training. It all depends on what the sheriff decides he would have them do. Annually, all law enforcement agencies in the state of Florida, including your district police, are required to have active assailant training. So I know in the past, the sheriff's office and OPD and some of the other agencies have asked us over the summer to allow them, or off times, to allow us to utilize our school. And they'll go in there and they'll run off some active assailant scenarios and.
Okay. So if we did have guardians, they would be allowed to attend those?
That would be up to the sheriff. They would have to have some active assailant trainings. We call it in law enforcement, a single officer response to a active shooter. And look, these things happen very quickly. So we've learned that there's no time to wait. There's no standing at the door waiting for somebody else to show up. You're going to go in and you're going to stop the shooting.
Okay. Okay. Those are good questions, just things to consider. But I did want to just share that with what the other school board members had shared with me. But I do hope that our community and our different municipalities can kind of rally up and see that we do want to make sure that we have the best of the best security here in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Okay, I have a couple of questions and we'll come back to the cost. So obviously, board members, most board members have touched on the concern about guardians. And I want to start by being very clear that I agree that guardians are, that is not the option that I would ever choose for our schools. And I do think that there's a very legitimate equity issue. And that concerns me enormously. And we've talked about funding and it troubles me that so many of our categoricals are underfunded. We have, what was it, a $16 million deficit, if you will, that we cover out of our general fund currently. One question I have, and you do not want to be misunderstood by anybody, either in the room, watching this, or the media that's covering this, I don't want anybody to misinterpret my question. But if you're able to tell me, if we did what I think the state would prefer and had nothing but guardians, would the budget that they provide us cover that? Because we know that the budget that they're providing us, the funding that they're providing for law enforcement is not adequate. Would it be adequate for guardians? Do you know? We have a $16 million deficit. If we were paying the rate of a guardian, would that go away or would we still have a deficit? Don't know. That's okay. That's okay. The answer is, don't know. We'd have to evaluate it. Dr. Vasquez?
So I just want to make sure for those listening, understand that the deficit that we have is not strictly due to the salary from the SROs. Our safe school budget funds other enhancements and security measures within our schools. So it's not just the SROs.
Superintendent, thank you very much for clarification. I think the path I was going down was that, I'm not even, well, I'm not even sure if we did just go guardian across the district, which I would never in a million years support, are we getting enough funding for that? And I suspect that's not the case. So a couple of other questions, and this may have been covered. Tasers. I don't know if, if anybody asked that question. Are guardians allowed to use tasers?
Guardians typically do not carry tasers. They're not issued by districts to carry tasers.
And one of the reasons I ask that is it wasn't that long ago, or maybe it was a long time ago, and I've just, I'm just older than I'd like to admit. But in my time in office, there was a point where law enforcement officers couldn't use tasers. They, they, if they needed to use force, they needed to use deadly force. And tasers are a very valuable tool for, I think, for law enforcement officers to have. And the idea that we could have somebody in our school that is faced with the choice of a gun or, or nothing is, is not a good choice. Nor do I think that the limited amount of training that they have could in any way prepare them for those split-second decisions that law enforcement has to make. And we see this time and time again where we, we get, you know, with videos and everything else, the whole country gets to look back and say, did that law enforcement officer make that right decision at that moment? And we constantly are second guessing that law enforcement officer. And that's somebody who most of the time has had years, years in the field. And we're talking about putting somebody who has had nothing really but training. And learning how to shoot a gun and having diversity training does in no way equip a person to be able to make those life or death decisions in an instant. So it, it frightens me beyond comprehension that, that would be an option that the state would even give us, to be quite frank. But it is. So since I, I think most of us are all on the same page, we are still faced with a significant problem and a significant funding problem and a significant equity problem when it comes to that. So a couple of questions. Oh, and I also want to double down on what Vice Chair said. And I think it's important to recognize that Orange County Public Schools, other school districts across the state, do not have the ability to raise our tax rates, our millage rate, sales tax. The only thing that we can do, we have two taxes that the legislature allows us to go out to the public and ask for permission with a time limit associated with them to raise taxes. Municipalities and counties are very different from that. They do have unilateral authority to raise their taxes. And that's an important distinction in this equation. Because I, I think if I'm a city, I'm thinking, well, I don't, I can't afford it. The county can't afford it, but I can't afford it. But they do have a tool. No, most politicians don't like to raise taxes, but I don't know very many politicians that like to have anything less than the safest environment in their schools. There is one aspect of this that, over the weekend, I, I keep thinking that why is it that five municipalities need more money for their SROs than the other four? And I, I do wonder if we're looking at that fairly from the municipality's perspective. So the 30 schools that we're talking about, Winter Park, for instance, Winter Park pays high school, Winter Park pays for, or provides the SROs for the high school. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And do we know what percent of the, the attendance zone for Winter Park High School is actually in Winter Park?
I don't have that information.
So I, I don't have it either. I was just trying to look it up and it's a little difficult. But I know, for instance, Windermere Elementary School, because I used to represent District One, I'm pretty sure that Windermere Elementary School covers a large amount of unincorporated Orange County. So when I think about the tiny town, and I'm not trying to be preferential to Windermere, I just happen to know Windermere better. When they're asked to allocate law enforcement officers to a school where maybe 50% of the students are actually in their jurisdiction, then the proportion of their law enforcement budget that's going to schools is going to be much greater than, say, the sheriff's office or OPD. And I think that that factors into why some of these municipalities are struggling to fund this because of the percent of their budget that they're spending on a constituency and, and an attendance zone that's not theirs. So is that making sense to everybody? Just because the school is located, it could be located on the fringe of a city with maybe, I mean theoretically, only 5 or 10% of the kids living I mean theoretically, only 5% or 10% of the kids living in there, but that city, by virtue of the location of the school, is responsible for all the law enforcement officers. So looking at it through that lens, I think as we're having these negotiations, and obviously I'm not at the table, and maybe this is something that's been looked at, I think we need to rethink how we are asking, how we're, what we're expecting out of each jurisdiction. Kind of like we have done with links, where we divide up the cost of funding links based on the ridership in each jurisdiction. So I do think it would be valuable for us to go back and take a look at that. I realize that we got one SRO in an elementary school, so it's not like you can divide up and have, you know, a quarter of an SRO paid for this one, a quarter by that one. I know that doesn't work, but perhaps from a financial standpoint, there's a different way of addressing this that allows us to keep the overall rate lower, but support and subsidize those jurisdictions that are covering an area outside of theirs with the funds that we give to those jurisdictions who are relieved of the responsibility that they would have if our attending zones matched the jurisdictions. In a lot of states, that's the case. In a lot of states, the city runs its own school district. Florida's not like that. So I would like for us to do that evaluation and maybe start these conversations over looking through their lens as well as our needs. Dr. Vasquez, you didn't, you look like you want to speak, so I would love your input.
No, I think that's a great idea. I do believe, and I don't have the exact numbers, but I do believe that goes into who is covering what schools. So for example, you mentioned Windermere. Windermere Police only covers one school. The sheriff's office, and I believe the, yeah, the sheriff covers all the others. But we certainly can go back and work with our team to see what percent of the students live within the town of Windermere and these other jurisdictions. But I do want to remind the board again, we have to make a decision in January. So we, as far, I know that there is a meeting coming up, I believe, next week.
January 14?
January 14.
I'm sorry, in January, and that probably will be the time when we have to make a decision about which direction we go, because we don't have the dollars to continue negotiating and also secure a contract for the guardians. But we will work on that date, and if we are able to get it prior to the break, we'll make sure to share it with the board.
Okay, and I don't know, again, it's very, very hard to try to put these maps together this way. We really need it done through a GIS. And our demographer, Mr. Moore, would probably be able to spit this out in five minutes. He may be doing it as we speak. He probably is. But like, for instance, Windermere High School, I was like, okay, what percentage of the zone? And then I'm like, wait a minute, Windermere High School isn't, it's not in Windermere. It's just not in Windermere. So that would not be a good example. Windermere Elementary School is, but I'm not sure that there are any middle schools that are in Windermere, that are in the city limits. So the fact that Windermere is only providing one SRO, I think is by virtue of the fact that Windermere Elementary School happens to be in Windermere. And so I don't know how much that plays into this difference. And I think, but I think we can get to that data pretty quickly. And I do think from an equity standpoint, from the funding partners, it is very legitimate and fair for us to reevaluate how the dollars that we have are appropriated and to restart that conversation. And like I said, with Mr. Moore's help, I think we can get there pretty quick. Not actually the number of students as much as it is because some students might be in private school or charter schools or whatever. It has more to do with the attendance zone potential. Mr. Pacheco, I think you are ready, and then I have that other question for you.
Chair, as you're having the discussion, one thing that we probably need to consider is the other side, which is those agencies that have already concluded negotiations. So like Windermere, for example, if we were to look at their coverage, some of those kids are coming from the Windermere area. So that rate that was already established for the sheriff to cover Windermere probably will have to be modified if we are using the same rationale that we would like to use for Windermere Elementary. So it's just one of the things that I would like to point out, it would be the same for anybody, any other of those law enforcement agencies that might be serving kids that are coming from these five municipalities. So, and again, if we change those rates, then we have to change the other rates as well. So just something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm suggesting doesn't guarantee that we keep, that we're able to keep the same rate that we have for the jurisdictions that have agreed to it, because they've agreed based on the number of law enforcement officers they're dedicating to this. And by revisiting how, what our expectations are of each, that may change. I recognize that. I just, the other thing to recognize is that some of the larger jurisdictions, their overall budget, the SRO portion, not just their law enforcement budget, but their overall budget is probably much smaller than a smaller town or city. And that matters, just like it matters to us when we're looking at our teacher population. I mean, it's a huge part of our budget. So every small increase amounts to a very large increase district-wide. And if you're looking at a small portion of your employees, maybe it's 5%, you know, the same percentage increase for 5% of our employees is less of a hit to our budget. And that may be also part of what's factoring in to the distinction between the jurisdictions. So again, I'm not okay with where we are, but I do think it behooves us to, as much as possible, understand where they're coming from. And it may, there may be some more legitimate reasons than we realize that may cause us to take a different, more holistic approach. And I would like for us to pursue that. Thank you. So let me go now to, anything further? I'm sorry, oh, no, I do want to know the answer to my initial question, if you could.
Yes, I don't want to make our team members in the back nervous, but I'm about to disconnect this device to connect my device.
No problem.
I know that, so that I can show you the numbers that you requested.
And while we're doing that, just a show of hands in the audience, because sometimes I, I think I'm communicating and I'm speaking Greek. And to be honest, how many of you in the room have any idea what I was just talking about? Oh, yay, okay. Oh, that makes me feel good. I know that our two commissioners in the audience, and I do want to recognize them, have completely understand what I'm talking about. So thank you all for being here, absolutely.
There we go, okay, I got it. We got it to work, so. So just to, just to show you a couple of notes as the information that you're looking at, at the top, just as a point of reference, is the rate that we have negotiated for last year. So as you can see, the last year, fiscal year '24, we had an agreed-upon rate of $60,000. And then the total, equates based on all the total officers that we have. The table below, what it summarizes, is the rates that were agreed upon by the sheriff, OPD, Mayland, and Eatonville. You can see the three rates for each of the three years, '25, '26, and '27. You can see the totals, and I'm going to try to use my, to kind of highlight what I'm talking about every time I mention something. So this will be the total for the year that, the increase is close to $4.3 million. And I think that was the number that you wanted to get to. That represents the number that we have been talking about, the 20% increase for the year. Then between year two and three, on the already agreed-upon agreement with all the, four out of the five agencies, for the second year will be close to $300,000, which will represent 1.4% increase from year to year. And then the final year will be 600, close to $600,000, will represent 2.7% increase from year to year. So now, if you go to the third table, that is the number that we have derived. Again, just wanted to clarify that these numbers have not been completely confirmed by four out of the five agencies. Just one said that this is a number that they probably could entertain. So we have the 72, which all I have agreed upon, so that we're talking about the 20% increase. Then we go to year number two, this is the number that they probably, oh, sorry. Let me make sure that I don't confuse anybody. So this is the number that we're discussing, the 75.5. What that represents is a flat percent increase from the year before. You can see the percentages. So the idea is that after that increase of 20%, they're looking at about 5% increase per year. Then we go to the year three, which is $79,000. And you can see on this column, the totals, again, I'm trying to highlight too much, but you can see what the difference is. The additional funds to cover the increase, that's what we were talking about, and the superintendent mentioned as an example. Once we do it for all these five agencies, we have to make all the other ones whole. So the first, for fiscal year '26, that will be close to three quarters of a million dollars. That means it's not only for these five agencies, but going back to the other four that had already agreed upon at the previous rate. And the third year will be about a million two, which brings us to the total that we use as an example, close to $2 million. So that's, hopefully that gives you a better sense, and I can zoom in a little bit more so that it's a little bit clearer. So these are the numbers that we have been using in order to analyze all the progression through the negotiation process and what we will need to make sure if we get to agree upon. A good rule of, not a good, something that can help you just kind of visualize this in your minds is that we have close to 300 officers in our facilities. So every $1,000 is approximately $300,000. For every $1,000 that we agreed upon to increase on the rate of SRO is close to $300,000. Just to kind of keep that in mind when we talk about increases.
All right, thank you. And, you know, the difference between 1.4 and 5% is a huge difference, not just in dollars, but, and the difference between whatever, I mean, there's like three times as large an increase percentage-wise and then twice as large. Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to the data that you asked for, and I just want to clarify. So the data that you're asking for would also then include, for example, Windermere High School, where the sheriff pays for the SROs there, but there are students that live in the town of Windermere?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, and no, I mean, I think...
Same for the middle schools?
Yeah, absolutely. It's going to, it's going to cut both ways, but I think it's helpful for us to understand that. Again, as a percentage, I think Windermere, with regard to the elementary school, is going to be a net real negative. I think when, again, middle and high school, it's a positive to them. I don't know how it all washes out, but I think it makes sense for us to understand that. And look at that, again, holistically, and see what seems fair and equitable to make sure that we are not going to make a decision that we have to make to satisfy five jurisdictions that costs us this much money, when if we had done that analysis, we might say, okay, it's not equitable, maybe we have to pay a little bit more, but not that much more. I don't know. But again, I think not doing that puts us at a disadvantage with not having access to all the information, so.
I just think it's, when you look at the students that live in the town of Windermere, and the Windermere Police only pay for one SRO, and you take into account that they attend other middle, you know, middle and high school, I think it's in Windermere's favor. But yes, well, I wanted to make sure we got your request correct.
And I think, oh, I do want to take, I did mention, we have, I think we had two commissioners. We have Commissioner Nelson, Wilson is, no, Commissioner Wilson is here with us. Yeah, thank you. Is Commissioner Uribe still with us, Uribe? Okay, she was here as well. And I think, I appreciate both of you all understanding how important this is to our mutual constituents, so thank you. And congratulations on your victory. Glad to have you back at the seat. All right, Member Vanos, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you Chief Holmes, Mr. Pacheco, for this presentation, it was really helpful. And thank you for answering all of my questions. It took a really long time last week, so thank you so much for that. And also just want to echo and thank the SROs who I've personally interacted with at my children's schools. They're just such an amazing part of the community, and I'm so glad that they will continue to at least be in those schools. I wanted to also, I think Chair Jacobs brought up a really, really excellent point about the funding. So I want to ask a few questions about that. And also, I want to start, well, the funding in that, the funding for OCPS is just so limited coming from one stream from the state, from the state, that as Member Gallup pointed out, is probably not going to increase funding for us, even for SROs. My question is, I know that the safety, the money that we pay for SROs that comes from sort of the safety and security allocation, will we be advocating for more money to that generally? Which I know is used for other things too, but is that on our legislative agenda for this year? Do you know?
Based on our discussions with Scott Howard, I believe it is part of the legislative platform for this year, in order to request more funds for those specific initiatives of security-related items that we have to cover from our budget.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to know, on the slide where you show the SRO funding, just in case it's not clear to the public, I know we talked about this in our meeting, but this, the rates that are shown, that's not an SRO's salary, that's just the reimbursement that we're paying, and then the remaining part of their salary is paid by the law enforcement agency. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. The one thing to note in regards to the rates is that all the rates are different. You know, the salaries that an SRO could get paid is dependent, of course, what agency they work for, and also the time that they have been served as an officer. So of course, based on the length of time, just like similar, like teachers, you have somebody that has been longer serving as a police officer that could have a higher rate than somebody that had just initiated his career as a law enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you. Kind of going back to what Chair Jacobs mentioned, is, I have, okay, is this hypothetical? Is this possible? Would it be possible for one of the four agencies that we've reached an agreement with, if they had officers that had capacity to serve at one of our other schools that might have to have a guardian or with another, one of the 31 schools basically that we're talking about, or 30 schools we're talking about, if they had the capacity, could we use one of the, one of the officers from those agencies in one of the schools, like in a Winter Park school? Could we use an officer from Mayland who maybe had capacity in a Winter Park school?
That would be an agreement between those two agencies for that to happen under an MOU. That's not specifically addressed in the MOUs that we currently have here in Orange County Law Enforcement, that that would be between those two agencies to make that decision. The sheriff's office has the ability to serve anywhere in the county because they have overall jurisdiction for the county. But again, typically, my experience with the sheriff's office is they're going to respect the respect the other agency's jurisdiction unless they're asked to come in, or they have to come in because the agency's overwhelmed for whatever reason, for an incident. So that's how that typically works.
Okay, so it would be possible for OCPS to ask, let's say, Orange County, if they had officers that had extra capacity to serve in one of our schools that might not have an SRO? It's possible?
We could pose that question to the sheriff, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple more questions. I know you mentioned that the sheriff's office would be doing the training for the guardians. Have they expressed that they're, that of the agencies that we haven't agreed with yet? Have they expressed that they are interested and able to do those trainings?
Yeah, we briefly had that conversation, and they're capable of conducting that training, yes.
All right, and the next question has to do with the threat management team. And Member Byrd and Member Felder talked a lot about the relationships that the SROs have with the students in the school. And I think that there's so many great, great benefits of that for students, and that they both mentioned. But one thing that we didn't talk about was the threat management team, and how these SROs serve on these, these threat management teams in the schools. Is that right?
They do, yes.
Okay. So if, and I know you mentioned that guardians are not able to serve that role.
Not as a law enforcement, it's required, again, it's a core four, they're one of the core four that have to be on the team, and a guardian cannot sit in their place.
Okay, so two questions about that. One is, so that would mean that, you know, someone who has that relationship with students and who's built that relationship would then not be serving on the threat team, who could really provide insight to their experiences and interactions with the students? So we'd be missing out on that if we had a guardian in the school?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question is, who would sit, who would then have to fill that role?
Well, we'd have to utilize someone from our district police. Now, if you have multiple schools, it'd be very difficult to be there to have these type of relationships, as you described, but they could serve on the team.
And can you remind me how many district police we have?
Currently, in our employ, this includes me, 15.
Okay, so we have...
And we have a lot of roles and responsibilities. We currently have five that are covering schools.
Okay, so we only have 15, five are covering schools, and then we would now have to find, they would now also have to serve on these other threat management teams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know, well, actually, question, do SROs monitor threats on social media?
Our intel analysts monitor social media, but I don't want to go into too much detail about what everybody does.
But guardians would not be doing that at all, correct?
Typically, that would not be their role or function, no.
Okay. What happens if a guardian, because I've read some studies on, you know, arming, you know, people that aren't law enforcement officers in schools? What happens if a guardian, you know, drops a firearm, or leaves it on a desk, and a child gets a hold of it, or some mishap happens? Who's liable?
Well, it depends on who's responsible, you know, who they're employed by. So if it's our guardian, it would be my headache to deal with. And then, needless to say, there's a couple of things. If they are in any way subject, guardians, to discipline, then we have to notify the Office of Safe Schools. So if they discharge their firearm in the line of duty, and/or are subjected to any type of discipline, in this, in a case like as you described, that would, that would result in discipline, then we'd have to notify the Office of Safe Schools.
Is there any kind, do guardians have any kind of immunity from...
No, they do not enjoy qualified immunity that law enforcement has. They are, you know, going to be subject to the possibility of some sort of liability personally. And needless to say, if they were part of a guardian, a security guard company, then that company would be subject to that liability as well.
Is there any cap on it?
Not that I know of, but that's kind of out of my scope.
Okay, sorry. Okay, jumping to another area, when you were talking about the, the, I guess, the background checks that are required for guardians, I know you said there was a psychological test and a couple other things. One thing I didn't see on there, but maybe this is included, if they have some kind of criminal background, are they prevented from becoming a guardian?
Yes.
Okay, this wasn't clear. You touched on this, but I just wanted to go back to get more information. I know you mentioned that guardians would have 12 hours of diversity training. Are they, are they trained with respect to ESE students?
I'm not familiar if they are, that's why I pointed out CIT training. Now, that's something that can, we've sent my security officers here at the district to CIT training, just because we think it's that important. If you're dealing with students, you have that training, all of our law enforcement have. And again, all the sworn officers in Orange County that serve in our schools have received CIT training. And I know the sheriff is personal, personally a big supporter of it. I've seen him at the graduations, and he, I think, is endeavoring to have all of his deputies attend the CIT training as well.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more questions. What kind of firearm would guardians carry?
It depends on what type of guardian they are. Hold on. And I don't really want to get into a lot of detail, but it's typically a semi-automatic handgun.
And I'll just, I'll just kind of end by saying, I have obviously a lot of, I have many concerns about this program. You know, some of the research that I did just talked about, you know, in chaotic situations, in school and active shooter situations, just the hit rate of trained law enforcement officers, which is really, really important anytime, but particularly when you're in classrooms with students, in kind of these situations is between 23 and 52%. And that's for a trained law enforcement officer. So I have real concerns for how a guardian with much less training would respond. I think you mentioned our guardians get, that guardians would get 144 hours of training. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think law enforcement officers get closer to 1,000 hours of training.
They do. Actually, that's correct. And the training's, you know, much more than just firearms and firearm safety. And then, of course, when you are hired by an agency, they're going to put you through their training as well, they're going to put you through qualifications, they're going to make sure you're, you know, well-versed on how to handle a handgun safely, and needless to say, use of force, use of force continuum, and all those areas. Now, they're getting that in their 144 hours, but it's just a snapshot. Are they going to get it when they leave there? Well, it depends on the sheriff. The sheriff could bring it back in, say, I'm going to have more training with them. But here in Orange County, it's 144 hours.
Okay, thank you. And then, just my last point, I know Member Felder had on this, but I have a real concern with the equity issue in schools, some having SROs, some having guardians, and on the impact that that will have for parents who care a lot about safety. It's probably the number one thing, I know I heard through my entire campaign and continue to hear about. And parents who are now learning that there will just be a guardian, or potentially a guardian in their school, you know, parents kind of making that option to pursue other choices outside of the public school system. And when they do that, not only is that hurting children, but it's also, when you have declining enrollment in schools, it's also hurting the school too, because there's fewer resources as children leave. So I have many, many problems with this, but thank you for your time, and thank you for your answers.
All right, thank you, Member Vanos. Member Salamanca, and then Member Douglas.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you both for spending time, walking us through all of this. And also, as Member Gallup and other members said, you know, thank you to those agencies that have worked with us, and understand and appreciate the importance of safety of our students, and also just the limited budget that we have, right? So one of the questions I had was around cost. You showed up how much we get in terms of revenue from the state. I think that's one of the slides, if we can go back to that. I'll just go off the numbers. So if we were to go with that high number that they requested by year three, that was the 79K number that you brought up, that would put us at just salaries alone, because I'm roughly going to say we have 300 officers. My area, District Two, is growing very rapidly, I add to school all the time. So I'm going to go with the 300 number to make our math easy. I mean, that would be almost $24 million just on salaries, right? We just talked about how this budget is not just salaries, this budget includes all types of safe school funding and safety. But when we look at that 79K number per, each of those 300, I'm looking at a really high number. I don't, when I look at the budget, it's just, it doesn't quite add up, and I see that number of 16 million going up significantly as well. So it is a really, really hard place to be put in, because as we know, with the kind of budget that we have, and not much control over our revenue, it ends up coming from the same pool of capital that we then have to have, the continuous conversation. And I have such a hard time stomaching, you know, I know you mentioned the numbers of the salary increases from 2021 onward, but I went all the way back to 2015. And 2015, to now, our teachers', average teacher salaries, and all teachers', is about 25% increase. But if I look at, from 2015, and we go all the way to 79K, if we were to go there in three years for them, that's, that's over 125% increase for this role. And it just, it's really difficult, because yes, I know our SROs keep safe, I'm absolutely in support of having SROs in our schools, but when things go south, our teachers' lines are also on the line, and their safety's on the line, and they keep our students safe from all sorts of things as well. So it's just, when I think budget, when I think percentages, when I do that comparison, it is, it is very difficult. So when we look at the, these costs as well, we talked about that ratio, and Member Vanos brought this up. We currently have 15 at the district level that cover five schools. We now are going to know that, okay, if we do a guardian program, we're going to probably need to increase that number at the district to support things such as threat management teams, right? Do we have a sense of how much more the district police budget increase would be to support some of these guardian programs that are, I guess, I just didn't see that on the budget anywhere?
That would be a decision by the superintendent. But that said, I have eight open positions right now that we're currently recruiting for. So, you know, we'd be in a situation where I am not concerned that we couldn't pick that up, all right? I think we could take on that role and pick up the threat management piece of this if we have to. It's not preferred, obviously, because you mentioned the issues. Madam Vanos says, you know, they're not there in that school, they're not there, they don't know, you know, these students per se, they don't have a relationship. But we can fulfill the role, a threat or a concerning behavior for law enforcement is something we deal with on a day, day-in, day-out basis, and we're very familiar with the types of things that happen in our schools, so we could pick that up.
Got it. Yeah, I think, I think I just kept seeing different buckets of things that maybe aren't accounted yet, and the numbers that would increase the cost even further from that number. In my district, you know, some schools are in city, some schools are in county. One of the things I've noticed that happens a lot sometimes is, if something happens around the neighborhood, God forbid there's someone that's unsafe that's walking around, there is always this instant communication between city and county in my district of, hey, this school, we're shutting down, we're not letting buses out until this is cleared. They communicate with the other folks and say, you all, you know, some of these elementary schools are within a mile, right, like walking distance from each other. And that communication happens quickly. Parents always notice, and now get emails if we even delay five minutes of like, why didn't my kid get dropped off when across the street, county-city lines, you know, that school was closed, right? And we are always trying to do it as quick as possible. In the case of guardians, how would that work, right? So are they going to have radios that they can know when cross-county, cross-city lines, something should, like, how, how would that operate?
Well, that would be a challenge, because if they're going to be in different municipalities, those chiefs would have to agree to give them radios. And if that wasn't the case, then the district police would have to provide the radios. Radios are approximately $5,000 apiece for a law enforcement radio, and they would be communicating with us, and we would have to share that information with, from our district police communication center. They wouldn't be communicating directly with the agency with jurisdiction. Now, if the chief's allowed for it, and said, yeah, you can be on our radio system, and here's the channel we want you to call in on, that'd be another matter.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, maybe because I live this every day in my district, with county and city being split, like, you know, Narco'sias, one to the right, one to the left, I, the amount of, of that rapid communication that is required for District Two to function in a healthy and safe way, I see it all the time, and I have huge concerns about some of the, in the details, implications and executions of something like the guardians and the radios and the, how many middlemen are in the communication when something is serious? So definitely thinking from, from District Two on how that would be impacted. And thankfully, I have very supportive agencies, and I'm very grateful for that, but I definitely have a lot of hesitations in our guardians. I also have a lot of hesitations on this budget. This is just brutal, when I think about the numbers and the percentages. And I'm looking at this $22.5 million, $23.7 million budget for that 79K, and I don't know where that, that's just salaries. And so I, you know, I urge us to continue having these conversations with these agencies, and try to get them to understand just the volume that we're working with here. I definitely urge them, and urge the public and folks to understand kind of how our hands are tied revenue-wise, and we just don't have the toolkit to be able to do this, even though we all appear, really are supportive of the SRO program, and want SROs in each of our schools. I have the same concerns that I think parents really, and I hear from teachers as well, just peace of mind of having an SRO and the car up front. Those are my questions. I also, I think, to the last point on CIT training for ESE students, I mean, huge concern, like, how we work with these students, what is expected of us on how we address the ESE students? It's so important, and I, it's hard for us as a district to kind of hand this off on training and priorities. It just, it's difficult, and I think this population would be unfortunately impacted for sure. But thank you for this work, thank you for the presentation, and I think we'll continue doing our work and informing and talking to the public about the importance of this.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Member Douglas, you're recognized.
Well, thank you so much, Chair Jacobs, and thank you, Chief Holmes, and Mr. Pacheco, for your presentation. It's been great. However, I'm really deeply saddened and disappointed that the safety of our kids are compromised, is compromised because of salaries, you know? And these are our children, they deserve the best, they deserve to have the best safety, safe environment to learn, and not to have an SRO in school, just like Members Salamanca just, you know, spoke about. It's, for teachers, it's very important to see that children are safe, there's a police officer's car in front, it's, it gives you a sense of, you know, safety, and, you know, wanting to make sure that our building, feel free to, to be able to teach and do the things that we need to do, and not worry about other issues, you know? And I agree with Chair Jacobs, guardian programs, the more I listen to it, the more I just really, it's very unsettling, it's not, it's, it's not solid at all, you know? I don't feel like it's something that can help with safety of our kids. We really need people that are trained, you know, are trained for this job, not the teachers, okay? And not the people that just come in for, how many hours of training? 144? No, okay? Our children deserve the best, and they deserve to be safe, all right? And I also think that the problem is, you know, is applying to 30 schools, right? 30 schools, and we really need to talk to those schools and make sure that, you know, they understand that it's not only the children of Windermere, it's our community, it's our children, they all belong to us, okay? And I'm looking forward to January 14th, when they will have the negotiations, to be able to, you know, with a lot of prayers, that they will understand that, you know, this is our community. And in order for us to have a great community, we need to have safety. And let's put other things aside and think about our children. And, and let's put other things aside and think about our children first. So that's it.
Thank you, Member Douglas. Member Ferrante.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this has been a really great discussion and I think it's been good to just be able to go over the details and discuss it. It is very concerning, I think, for all of us and I know, especially for me, I really am like, we really want to make sure that our kids are safe. Everybody in our schools are safe, that parents feel confident when they drop their children off. Some of the things that I'm thinking of, just from a parent's standpoint, when you drop your kid off at school, seeing the car, the vehicle of a patrol car in the front of your child's school really does give you a sense of security. And with the Guardian program, we wouldn't have that. Not to say maybe our schools wouldn't be as safe, but as a parent, when I drive in and I don't see that, that patrol car, it gives the sense that it's not safe. And I think that whole, in your presentation, how you kept saying that the perception, and I think that is a huge thing, that I want the, the public, I want parents, I want new parents who are coming in and dropping off their kindergartner to feel that their child is safe at school. And so it really is concerning when you crunch the numbers. We're looking at all of our numbers. We're really, we're over budget as is. It honestly feels like a slap in the face that they want such an incredibly high percent raise. Just in the last four years, it was a 32% raise. Is that correct or more than that? Whatever it is, it is incredibly high. The fact that we, we, we can't even give that kind of raise to our teachers, administrators. As much as we understand law enforcement is putting their life on the line to keep our schools safe, it's really, we don't have that kind of money and they, I mean, I feel like most everybody understands that the public schools don't have that kind of money to, to provide that kind of raise. And so I really, again, I want to urge our community, I want to urge those municipalities who are holding out and kind of pushing back to consider every child and every teacher, every parent who's dropping their child off, we want the very best. And for us, I think it's very clear, all of us want to have our SROs, want to continue with SROs. They've been incredible. It's one of my favorite things to do when we walk into a school and visit, visit our schools, to be able to see our SRO, chat with them, see how things are going. Our SROs really are incredible. And a shout out to, again, to the municipalities and to our sheriff's office, Orlando PD, for, for stepping up and continuing with providing those SROs. It's been, it is huge. So for my area, it is not impacted. However, with the areas that are, that is, it's a huge concern. And so we want to continue to provide those SROs. So I would continue to urge the public, write your, write your local office, your local sheriff's office or city office, your commissioners, whoever it might be that you need to speak to, and urge them and say, this is, safety really is number one for each of us. But thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferrante. Member Byrd, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I, I want to go back real quick to the threats because I think that that's something that's really important to, again, reiterate that law requires that a, a police officer serves on the threat management team at every school. So every time a threat comes into a school, which we all know, we have seen a huge increase in threats this year at all of our schools. Every time a threat comes in, every threat is worked through the threat management team as is required. So that means every time that happens at every one of these 30 schools that won't have a police officer, that your department will have to send someone to that school to sit on that threat management team and work through that threat with the school, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit, just for a minute, about our police force because over the weekend, those were some things, comments that I heard a lot. You know, we have a police force, why not just have our police force fill in these schools? So can you kind of speak on that for a minute? First of all, I want you to discuss, I think there's a misunderstanding about what, what our police force already does. The size of it, which you've already talked about, is not as large as people might think that it is. But the vast responsibility that you already are covering in our school district, could you spend a few minutes talking about that to clarify that for the public?
Sure, I'm glad you asked. This is a complex school safety and security program that we manage here. The law enforcement agency you currently have oversees the entire program. These things include an intelligence unit that interfaces with our local law enforcement, providing information about possibly a student that was involved in the threat and vice versa. They provide us information, things that we need to know in event to abate the threat, whatever it may be, and address it. It's busy. We have a lot of things going on. Those particular intel, that intel unit sits on threat management teams as well to provide support to them, information they may need in dealing with that particular situation. We have a 24/7, 365 communications, law enforcement communications team, okay? So our, our district police communication puts out every security notification associated with a whole host of things that happens at schools, 24/7, 365. They're here during hurricane operations. They never shut down. So it's really busy. There's a lot of things that go on. They handle over 1,000 calls per month in our, in, in our communications unit. So we have a lot going on there. We oversee what's called, I call it, our electronic security systems unit. We are required by the state of Florida to test all the emergency equipment that's in our schools that they utilize. An example would be duress buttons. We do testing of the Alyssa's Alert that we have, our Safer Watch application. We have to test every school, including our charter schools, mind you, because I'm responsible as your school's safety specialist for the safety and security that goes on in the charter schools. So we oversee that. I have a compliance unit. We have six people that are engaged in compliance. We have CLERIAC compliance with our technical colleges. And we have Marjorie Stoneman High School Public Safety compliance in all of our schools. We have to go out and visit every school every year and make sure that we check every door, make sure we have a safer area designated in every single classroom, make sure that all of their required trainings and training certificates are in place, that the threat management teams are meeting like they're supposed to monthly and for every threat. So, should I keep going? We have our protective services unit. I have my security officers. They don't just provide security here at RBELC and over here at the tech college. We also provide security in Magnolia School and Silver Pines Academy. So they provide support for those schools. Sometimes we have students from those schools elope and they're there to help keep that from happening. So there's just, we're involved and engaged in a lot of things. My law enforcement officers oversee those units. They're the supervisors for those units. And then also when there's a threat at a school and we're concerned that there's a possibility that threat could come to the campus, I send my officers out to those particular schools and provide additional services. If we have the threat of an active shooter like imminent at a campus, we respond immediately. All hands on deck, we go there. I personally serve, if I'm available, on the incident command post as a representative for the district. And if I'm not available, it'll be one of my, one of my, my deputy chief or one of my captains. And this isn't just during normal school hours, as you might think, because there are kids on campus from 6 o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock at night. So a lot of these things happen after our regular school hours. So if a high school is getting out, you know, at 2:20, something could happen at 5 o'clock. Or there can be aftercare at a school, at Windermere Elementary, for example. And there could be some sort of threat to the campus and they're concerned that some, some threat may migrate onto the campus because of police activity in the area. Next thing you know, we're going out and doing that. I keep officers on until 6 o'clock in the evening and if anything happens coming up to that, you're staying until it's done. All right, so, and of course, I'm on call 24/7, 365 for the Fortify Florida that come through. So we want to make sure that if we do have a threat and say it's Saturday, and I promise you, your favorite team's going to be playing when this comes through, or on Sunday, and we'll be managing that threat. Our intel analysts are on call. I have an on-call commander. I'm on call. And we're going to try to make sure that that threat is addressed before that threat comes to school on Monday morning.
Right.
We also do weapon screening. We have randomized weapon screening programs. I don't want to go through a lot of detail. We have K-9 also. You've met K-9 Coco. And she's part of our screening program. I have six screeners that screen our schools to make sure that the students know they're not to bring weapons and unauthorized items, including a whole host of things.
Thank you, Chief. And so, and you also fill in for schools, for our municipalities or sheriff's office if there happens to be like-
We do. So I mentioned, yeah. I'm glad you brought that back up. I might have misspoke. I have, we cover three schools and currently we're covering four because one of our municipalities, their officer left the agency and they didn't have anybody to backfill it. So I have my officer, chief called me, can you cover this for us? And I've put my officer in there until he can be relieved by one of their officers at that agency. Same for the charters as well. If a charter school, their SRO or their Guardian doesn't show up, maybe they're sick and they, they can't come to work that particular day. We'll be getting, getting a call in the morning. We're scrambling. If the agency of jurisdiction can't backfill it, we go there and we backfill it for that particular day until it can, they can have somebody there. So as you can see, there's a lot of complexity to do that, a lot of movement parts and pieces. And it's not a bunch of cops just doing all this work. It's overseeing it, we're managing it, backfilling and making sure that we have a coordinated effort for our safety and security program here in Orange County, not just some haphazard, not thought through. Oh, and by the way, we have over 14,000 cameras. My ESSU unit oversees the camera system here and then makes sure everyone, the cameras when schools come online and every year that the cameras are configured so they operate properly. So your badge that you have, your badge reader, we manage that system as well. And so we give access to the higher level employees here in the district so they can get to their appropriate places within the district.
Needless to say-
I'm sorry, there's a lot going on with that.
I think you, I think you did a good job.
I think I covered it.
You could go on and on, I'm sure.
There's probably a few things I didn't go into, but-
Yes, there's a lot more that you didn't even cover. But needless to say, it is a vast job coordinating and covering security and safety for this entire district.
Talking about it, okay, so.
Not to mention the fact that much of this is required in state law.
It is. It's required for us to do most of these things. Some of it, though, we go over and above and beyond here in the district. That's why I'm so proud of serving here as your chief and your school safety specialist because we're not just trying to meet the bar, we're trying to meet or exceed it and we do it in a lot of ways.
Okay, so, so you mentioned that you have 15 officers currently on your force. But you have an opening for 23.
I do.
But you're having trouble filling.
We are. We have to compete with these other agencies as well. A lot of the ones we get are retired and recently coming down from New York, New Jersey, places like that. They moved to Florida and they're not quite done with a career and they're looking for good hours. I think we have, you know, a great program here, the good hours, they can serve in a school when they first get here because I love training them as an SRO in the school before they move on to doing other things here for the district so they get a, a sense of what it means to be an SRO in a school and what it means to the schools themselves. So, yeah.
So the point is, though, that you are having trouble filling your open positions now just because of what we are experiencing district wide, where we cannot compete and offer competitive salaries because our funding is still limited. So that kind of puts to sleep the idea that we could just snap our fingers and suddenly be able to hire 30 more officers to cover these schools if we needed to in August. A, that's one thing. Where would we find, where, how would we be able to fill those positions? Secondly, is the cost would not, when I look at you, the program, Guardian program costs that you outlined in the presentation, what I'm seeing as the advantage to the Guardian program cost-wise is just that it would be a kind of set cost. It's not that it would save us any money because it's, you have estimated here 74,000 is, is what you're estimating. If we hired, if we hired additional police officers, I believe you've quoted us that a salary, including like a vehicle, because they have to have a vehicle, they have to have all their equipment and everything, is actually up over 100,000 a year with-
Quite a bit more. I mean, just a police patrol vehicle outfitted is over $50,000.
Right. So we wouldn't be able to afford that, right? We can't even reimburse our municipals, municipalities for more than what we're offering them now, 72. So, so my point to that is that it's not an option either. And I wanted to make sure that that was very clear, that it's not, that, that was something I was hearing a lot this weekend, was that that would be an easier solution and it really isn't. So I wanted to get that out there. And then finally, I just want to-
Vice Chair, could I, well, just one more comment. I know that you're proceeding to another question. But the one thing that I, I think the public needs to know based on everything that Brian commented regarding what they bring to the table is that they are the coordinating body that help us coordinate all these SROs that we have with nine different agencies. You know, they talk the same language. They, they understand the terms. They understand what some of the things that the law enforcement needs from us and they help translate what we need from them as well. So because like you said, you, you had a couple of questions, like why does the district police exist? Why, why do they have it if they're not covering our schools? It's because the intent of creating district police was to help us coordinate. And of course, they do have a portfolio of other functions that they do. But that is one of the functions that I think that is very valuable to us because they help us coordinate with those, all those nine agencies that we, that we get to work with on a daily basis.
Yeah, exactly. And, and if, if we did not have an OCPS police force, we would have to go out and hire someone to stand in as our school safety op, is that what it's called? What your title is?
School Safety Specialist.
School Safety Specialist because that's required by law. We'd have to have someone to do all of those things. We'd have to hire a whole, whole nother department, like what his department does, but this way, at least they are sworn law officers, like you said, and they understand the language and can do it in a better way. Basically, they're fulfilling all of the things we would have had to fulfill anyway. Right. So thank you for that. That was a good point to bring up as well. So I just, I just want to kind of reiterate, I, Member Vanos covered a few concerns that people have about the Guardians. And yes, there are numerous concerns. I will tell you, though, that, you know, this has forced me to have to do a lot of research. And there are technologies, there are technologies out there that can protect against some of those things. I will just say that, that I have found. There is actually a local company that's, that has technology for things to protect against some of those concerns, safety concerns. I certainly hope that we would never have to get there, as I said earlier. But again, we, we are required by law to have coverage in our schools. So I, I just want to, my last statement on this is going to be that we will never have enough money to fully reimburse these, these police forces, any of them, for the cost of these officers in our schools. I think everybody knows that. Therefore, it is really the decision of these municipalities to go back- Therefore, it is really the decision of these municipalities to go back and discuss if, as Member Gallo said, prioritize the safety of the kids in those schools, the staff in those schools, and to make the decision to accept that they have, this is just part of it. This is just part of policing the community. Part of their community is the schools, just like it is the streets in this neighborhood, the streets in that neighborhood. If there's an area of a neighborhood that happens to be higher crime or there's a crime spree going on, they don't go to the HOA and say, "You guys need to buck up some more money. We have to put more officers over here." It's just part of keeping the community safe. So this is part of the community. So I'm hopeful that every municipality will find a way to do this. And I wouldn't be saying this if I didn't feel like we did not do our part because I certainly have heard for years the concern about the cost and the reimbursement rate of the SROs. And I have advocated many times that we need to reimburse more. We need to reimburse more. And this year, I honestly feel as though we did. I feel like we really came in strong. That was, this was a great way to, I thought, show them how much we appreciate them and, you know, we are sacrificing different areas. And that's another thing we don't talk about a lot. You know, like where does this money come from? There are cuts that are made, and we have tried really hard this, the past two, three years, preparing for, you know, the loss of our SRO funds and finding places to consolidate and make our budget tighter everywhere we can. We had to even cut some summer school programs this past summer to pay for some other things. So, you know, our superintendent has cut the cabinet positions. And so, you know, every area has cut, we've cut programs that are not, don't have return on investment. So I really felt like at this point that we hadn't, that we did our part to do what we can. So hopefully, they will feel the same way and they will do their part. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a couple of questions. The first one is, can you walk me through a scenario, the best that you can, if we have a guardian on our campus and someone comes up and says so-and-so has a gun in their backpack? How would we proceed with a guardian versus an SRO?
Well, it would be, they didn't reach out to an administrator. They would go and meet that student if there was a gun in the backpack. The administrator would be in a position to conduct a search of that backpack so they would make sure they were standing by to stand by in the event something were to happen right then. And they would separate the backpack from the student. They usually take them to some place where they can, you know, talk to the student and hopefully use some of the equipment that we have given them. I'm not going to go into detail, but make sure they don't have anything on their person themselves, and then search the backpack. The administrator would conduct the search. The administrator's search. They have search training and they do that at schools.
So really, it's, would they take the guardian with them?
Yes.
If a gun was found on a student and the student, it became an issue, what could the guardian do? Like if they, if they were wrestling with the gun, something like that happened with the student that had it in his backpack? Like the administrator can only do so much, right? Because there wouldn't be an SRO on campus. So other than call the police, the law enforcements, which I'm sure they would immediately do.
They should, yes.
I mean, even if they got there at the fastest, it would take a couple of minutes. So in the meantime, before we got law enforcement officers on our campus, what would the guardian be able to do to de-escalate the situation and get the gun away from that student?
They are required to have some de-escalation training as part of their training in the 145 hours we mentioned earlier. You know, what would they be required to do? Well, prevent and abate. If they're fighting over a gun, they should be engaged in that situation and help disarm the student in that situation. So that is their sole responsibility to manage that situation right there, all the way up to the use of deadly force.
So in that instance, they would be able to put their hands on a student?
They would, yes, to prevent or abate, yes.
Okay. Do our guardians, do they have immunity if they were, if someone were to get on our campuses and they would shoot and kill an assailant? Do they have immunity against being sued or can they be sued by the family?
John, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so there's complex layers of different laws that cover here, right? So state law would be, it would be a wrongful death action. There would be some ways that we would assert. The district would get sued in that case if it was our guardian. The guardian may get sued individually. State law says somebody acting within the course and scope of their employment and not exhibiting a willful or wanton disregard for human life is immune from suit. So the liability would come to us. We have a $200,000 per person, 300,000 total cap on some, on the claims there. Now, of course, if judgment was rendered against us and somebody got a claims bill, they would have to go up to the legislature and get a claims bill for any amount above $300,000. There's also Section 1983 under federal law. That would be a deprivation of somebody's life, liberty, without due process of law, and wrongful death claims can turn into 1983 claims. There are no caps under 1983 under federal law against government entities or individuals found liable. So there's a whole bunch of factual scenarios that would have to be looked at, and there's a bunch of laws that could be applied there. But it's, there's liability to go around, and let's just be clear, we'll be litigating that for a long time if we were ever in that scenario.
And isn't it true that the legislature keeps trying to raise that immunity amount every year?
They do try to raise that immunity amount every year. The smaller districts especially band together against that because that higher limit would devastate them. It would not be good for us. Let's be clear. It would be very deleterious to us if we had higher caps. However, those smaller districts and smaller counties and municipalities would be especially devastated if that cap was lifted up.
Thank you. And if we hired guardians, they would report to you, Chief Helms?
Well, if they were a security guard agency, they'd report to them. But yes, there would be a dotted line directly to me and my team.
So I guess my next question.
We would manage the guardian program if it was a security guard program, yes. We would manage it.
Okay. And I know as our school safety specialist, you don't have immunity either.
I'm sorry?
You don't have immunity as our school.
Well, I do as your chief. I have qualified immunity as your chief. As a police officer for the district, I have qualified immunity, yes.
And I just want to make that point because as a board, we've made a priority to ensure, and I even think we put it in policy, that our school safety specialist is a trained law enforcement officer. A, for that reason, and B, if you're our school safety specialist, you need that type of training and you need that type of knowledge and you need a little lingo, all the stuff that my fellow board members discussed up here. But in other districts where it's not, they don't have immunity because we were just discussing that at the FSBA conference. So it's good to know that you have immunity so that you cannot get sued. However, the rest of us up here are not so lucky. So I just want to, I want to point out again that I just, I was just Googling things that have happened across the country and here in Florida with guardians. I Googled the same thing with school resource officers. Nothing came up but a whole slew of things where there's been errors on the parts of guardians. We had guardians walk out in Hillsborough, just left their shift. We've had guardians in Pasco and Lake County, I think, one of the two that left their service weapon in a bathroom or laying around. And I believe the law that we have to report to safe schools initially wasn't in the very first Marjory Stoneman Douglas requirements. It came after some of these things transpired, not just here in Florida, but across the country, that there's a reason that the law was enacted, that we have to report to the Office of Safe Schools any type of altercation that happens on our campuses between our SROs. I'm never going to support guardians. I'm just going to throw it out there and be very, very transparent. I will not support them. I will not vote for them. I don't believe that that is the safest option for our schools. I'm going to beg those five municipalities to take a long look at what they value and how they value it. And I'm sincerely praying that they decide to do the right thing and put school resource officers in our buildings because if they don't, the decisions that we have to make up here are not fair. It's not fair to any of us up here. It's especially not fair to our superintendent and our district staff because I will be a board member that will say no and we're going to have to find the money. And so where does it come, and I understand that that puts my superintendent in such a difficult position, and that's not fair to her. But I've been on the other side of this for too long with the Florida Coalition Prevent Gun Violence. I've been up in Tallahassee. I've given too many speeches. I've seen too many things happen. I've been on the side of gun reform to keep our kids safe. I've pushed out child locks. I just, in good conscience, I can't put those 30 schools and those students and our staff at what I believe to be a high risk by putting a guardian in there. It's never been tested. We've never had a situation where we've had, thank you, Lord, that we've had a gunman or a assailant come on campus where there's guardians to see what would happen, what in real time would happen if we have a guardian. We just, we haven't experienced that in Florida. And I don't want Orange County to be the first one that does. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, with respect to liability for you all as board members, just want to make it clear, the decision about guardians versus SROs, that is what's known as a planning and discretionary event. And under state law, you all are completely immune from being sued on discretionary and planning-level decisions like that. So that is not something that you all would be on the hook for liability for. I don't think you would be on the hook for liability under state law negligence individually. I don't think you're going to be on the hook for liability under a 1983 claim unless you made some sort of decision that evidenced such willful and wanton disregard for human life that you all would be subject to that type of liability. So I don't want you all to worry about that from a liability standpoint against you all individually. The board collectively is the entity that's going to get sued, and that's going to be it. But you all are not going to be individually in liability in those cases.
Thank you, John. Although there is a lawsuit where we've been named individually.
Yes.
So just because it may not have standing, does it mean it can't be done?
You've been sued in your individual names, but in your official capacities there. They have not sued you individually, which is a difference. I'm trying.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Couple of last questions I have. So we have 30 schools. How many total SROs? I don't, high schools are a different number. So what's the total number of SROs?
It'd be 34.
34 SROs. We are short if we can't negotiate that contract. So my closing thoughts on this, I agree with everything that most of my fellow board members have said. I'll just echo everything that Member Gallo said. I think it's very obvious to most of us, to our community, to our faculty, to all of our employees, to all of our parents, that this is not the highest quality of safety we can have, and we shouldn't be in that position where we have to make that decision. I agree with, I don't want to be the first to experience how a situation, a tragic situation unfolds because of the lack of experienced, trained law enforcement officer. Having said that, I just, I want to focus as much as we can on what's the solution? With 34 officers, that's, I don't, I think, I think the sheriff's office has, I want to say, yeah, almost 3,000, 2,700 at least as reported on Google, but in that ballpark. And OPD, I'm not sure what that is. It's probably maybe 25, 30% of it, I'm guessing just by virtue of their size. Population-wise, maybe it's 25%. Those numbers are a lot higher than a lot of these smaller jurisdictions. Last I knew with Windermere, they had, maybe Chief, you might know how many, about how many Windermere has law enforcement officers?
I believe it's 14.
Okay. Okay, I was going to guess like 40, but so somewhere between 14 and 40. That's a whole lot less. I'm going to go back to Windermere just because I'm more familiar with it. But less than 30% of the students at Windermere Elementary School are actually from the town of Windermere. About 3% of the high school students in Windermere High School, about 3% would be coming from Windermere. On average, they're generating about 5% of the population of an elementary school. You add that together, and their contribution from an equitable standpoint is less than a half of an SRO. So I think, I'm going to, I know I'm going to beat this horse to death, but we want equity in our schools when it comes to safety. I'm all in. And I think we're all in, that every school should have the same level of expertise when it comes to protecting our schools. And again, I think we just need to go back and look and make sure that we are treating all of our jurisdictions equitably. Look at the funding formula. It may be a total different way of, as Member Vanos mentioned. It could be that the sheriff or OPD takes over a larger portion. But they obviously get the funding for that. So there's other ways that we can look at this. The main goal is to find a way to avoid guardians and to find it in the fairest fashion that we can. With that, let me call on Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question. With the agencies who we haven't reached an agreement with, if we do not reach an agreement with them on the SROs, what would you expect would happen to their current SROs?
They'd be absorbed back into their patrol operations most likely and other areas that, you know, may be short.
Okay, so basically, let's say if a law enforcement agency was providing four SROs, now they're getting $72,000 times four less money from OCPS to pay their officers. So they'd be paying an additional $288,000, let's just say, based on four, to cover their officers. Whereas if they agree to the current three-year contract where they want 79,000 and we're offering 75,000, they would really only be having to pay an extra 16,000 for four officers.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we talk about next steps? So if we can't reach an agreement with the five municipalities, what are the next steps? Does this go to rural development? Does this go towards a vote? What does that look like?
It's an operational decision that will be made by me. The information that I've heard today will help guide that decision, but it is an operational decision.
So the, okay, I have, I'd have to go. I was under the impression that per state statute, that it had to be approved of by the board to do guardians in a district. Because I know other school boards have, it has gone before the board for approval. So I would be very concerned if we'd be making a decision like this that was just strictly an operational decision without it going before the board and without taking public comment and a rural development and on an agenda item. That concerns me.
So legal is verifying information that they had shared with me, so we'll. My understanding from speaking to him was that it was an operational decision.
So it is an operational decision. The statute makes responsibility joint for both the school board. Here's what it says, "For the protection and safety of school personnel, property, students, and visitors, each district school board and school district superintendent shall partner with law enforcement agencies or security agencies to establish or assign one or more safe school officers at each school facility within the district, including charter schools." So it does, this is typically a joint, this is typically an operational decision. It does make responsibility to you all to say to the superintendent, for example, hey, It does make responsibility to you all to say to the superintendent, for example, "Hey, I noticed there's not a Safe School Officer at certain schools." That would be a responsibility that would be on you all. But as for what type of officer, Safe School Officer we would have there, that is typically an operational decision that the superintendent would handle.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. I know other districts have handled it differently, so I would urge us to talk to some of the other legal counsel in other districts. As I just said, I really don't want this decision to be made without input from the public. I just, I don't think our community wants guardians. I don't think our community will put up a guardians and not to vet that more thoroughly in a public atmosphere. I just, I don't support. I don't support at all. I don't support guardians. I wouldn't support the superintendent's decision to put guardians on our campus.
All right. Dr. Vescas, you're recognized.
So if it's the will of the board that we pay the additional 1.9 million dollars, then we will go back and look at what cuts need to be made. I thought that was, that's been part of the conversations. So if the will of the board is that we find the 1.9 million, our team will go back and see where we cut.
Okay. All right, thank you. I was going to ask John to read that again, but we don't need to. And to be honest with you, our superintendent has been extremely responsive to this board. So you might, I understand that you may very much disagree with us from, you know, on a particular issue, and this might be one of them, but I also appreciate that.
No, no, please make, no, no, I do not want guardians in our schools.
Oh, no.
Absolutely not. I am, I want an SRO in every one of our schools, but we don't have the money. And every dollar that we are looking to cut is going towards salaries for next year, because we know that is a priority for our board. And so finding the 1.9 million dollars would mean that that's 1.9 million dollars that won't be able to go towards salaries for next year.
And Superintendent, thank you for making sure that was clear. I did not mean to suggest that you're in favor of this. I just know that you understand there's a cost to every decision. And if we have to come up with 1.9 million, there aren't good choices for us under this situation, and you'll share with us the cost of that. Hopefully, we come up with a solution that doesn't cost us that much. And hopefully, all of our jurisdictions involved in this have an opportunity to hear from the public before we make that kind of decision. Hopefully, they're hearing from the public already. So we're talking about, talking about 34 positions to follow up on Member Vanos's questions. What jurisdiction was it that has four? Is that, was that Winter Park? Who was that? You were just, yeah, okay. Yeah, so if, if a jurisdiction had four, say, SROs, and on that jurisdiction we were to switch to guardians, then that would not only be that much money that they would have to absorb without our support, but that might very well be for people that don't want to work in that jurisdiction anymore. Because I'd like to think that a lot of the law enforcement officers who have said, "Sign me up, that's where I want to be," that's where they want to be. So it could be that we end up hiring those people, bringing them onto our force, paying them what we can pay and not necessarily what those jurisdictions are paying them, because they're part of a team they want to be part of. So that's also a possibility that's worth considering. And I don't know, I just, I don't know these individuals, but some of these smaller jurisdictions, to have to take on that additional obligation is, you know, just might not be affordable. I've, poor Windermere, they're going to watch this, say, "Why does she keep bringing up Windermere?" But if Chief's numbers are right, and they have one officer that we're paying for, and maybe one more than they should have to pay for, but that's also one person that they're not going to have funding to pay for if we were to go with the guardian option. So anyway, I think, I think all of this is a really good conversation to be having. I think it's really helpful that our parents and our employees understand where we stand on this. And I'm going to cross my fingers and hope that we reach a good, not much of a compromise, a good solution. And I'm more optimistic than I was last week, I will say that. So with that, Member Felder, at this point, I think you're closing us out.
I just wanted to, first of all, to say and to reiterate, this discussion was very much needed. I'm so glad every board member had an opportunity to discuss every aspect of this. And I certainly would not want, and I know we're going to look into this, our superintendent to be put out there to make an operational decision and then not have an opportunity to have the public, the input from constituency, and again, another discussion with the board, because if it, the worst-case scenario, and I pray to God that that will not occur, but I know that we're probably going to have to go back to the board and look at this, and but I am certainly in favor, before a decision has to be made, I would like to have not only input from parents, but teachers, administrators, people who are in the schools that have to accept the decision that this district is going to make. And I know we talked about it, the hybrid example, where some, that may work, but again, SROs in the school is something that I prefer from my own personal experience as a teacher, and knowing what it did for some of the children that I taught who got in trouble, and they saw an SRO who saw them about to do something bad, and they were able to de-escalate that outside of the school. So again, I just wanted to say that if we, and we are obviously going to have to go back, I really would welcome input from the public. They need to hear, we need to hear and let them discuss with us about this. Thank you, Chairperson.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, that ends our work session on, I don't even want to call it the guardian program, on law enforcement options, SRO options for our schools. And we will reconvene in about 20 minutes. Not reconvene, but we will convene for our public open comments session at 4 o'clock. With that, meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for being here.